Welcome to this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. The types of business that occur at these meetings include public hearings, official voting on actions by the Board of Commissioners, presentations by departments of the county, and recognition of service that makes our county great. As your elected representatives, the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners is committed to improving the lives of all our residents while preparing county government to meet the demands of the future. In order to do that, we need to share our thoughts and plans with you. More importantly, we need you to share your thoughts, concerns, and opinions with us. We encourage you to come and experience the process by attending any of these meetings. They occur every first and third Thursday of the month at 6:00 PM at the St. Clair County Administration Building at 200 Grand River Avenue in Port Huron.
I'd like to call this meeting of the Human Services Committee of the Board of Commissioners to order. First, there is an American flag back there behind the screen, isn't there? Please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner McConnell.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Heidemann is absent. Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Commissioner Bone.
Here.
Commissioner Graytop.
Here.
Commissioner Tomian.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Are there any additions or deletions to the human service agenda this evening?
I'll make a motion, we accept the agenda as presented.
Support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Under citizens to be heard, I have not received any slips from audience members wishing to address the Human Services Committee. We have three other committees that have people who would like to make comments. Are there any updates from the Board? I have an update, it really isn't for the Human Services Committee, but since I'm chairing this committee. Today, I represented our Chair, Howard Heidemann, at the Next Michigan Corporation meeting in Flint today. This is the regional body that is working on economic development in the Thumb area. It's also called the I-69 Corridor Committee. And we've been very involved with this committee because of our advocacy for the expansion of the Blue Water Bridge Plaza. And probably the most important matter that came before us today was the fact that in the Governor's budget message, the Regional Prosperity Agenda funding was zeroed out in Governor Whitmer's budget. As you might recall, it was Governor Snyder who came up with the concept of having multi-county regional economic development agencies. And one of them was the one that we participate in concerning I-69, I-94, and access to Canada. There has been no appropriation for the entities, and there doesn't seem to be any emphasis now on transportation and logistics. So today, our Board took action to look into this matter further, try and obtain feedback from the MEDC, and then it is our intent to organize a meeting of our legislators to make sure that our initiatives for the I-69 corridor are not completely dropped from the state budget. On a related matter, Commissioner Heidemann was re-elected for a fourth term as the Secretary of the Organization.
You graciously accepted for him?
I am his appointed alternate. So with that said...
Just a question.
Sure.
Could you brought this up? Where do all these economic... Throughout the state? She's putting an end to it? If I'm... Maybe I'm misinterpreting what you're saying.
To what was explained to us that in her budget, there is no funding, no prosperity agenda.
Throughout the state?
Throughout the state, all of them, not just ours.
It's not all economic development, what's it? That's not all. Oh, I know, I know. They'll be separate SEMCO. Yeah, there's only five or six areas.
You might recall, when the Governor came out with this, maybe six years ago, he actually talked about moving St. Clair County out of SEMCO.
Right.
And we were only going to be participating in the I-69 corridor. There was a lot of discussion about that, and we retained our membership in SEMCO, but also been a significant partner in the I-69 corridor. It originally started out with four counties, Chiawassee, Genesee, LaPire, and St. Clair County, and maybe three years ago, the rest of the Thumb was added to that.
Well, as you and Jeff, part of our representation for SEMCO, evidently it was a pretty good decision to stay a partner of SEMCO.
It was.
There's another thing that's on the table. The Detroit Regional Chamber of Commerce used to have their own Economic Development Group, call it what you may, that has actually now grown with foundation support, a much larger group that's now part of 11 counties. It's from St. Clair County over to Chiawassee, down to focus on those 11 counties. DTE Energy's a big player, and some of the other agencies. They actually went from a $750,000 budget, now they're going to roughly have a $6 million budget, and then they're going to have different economic development people. I think this agency's going to employ 20 to 40 people somewhere, give or take. So we had met with the new director of that, which more of the attraction efforts are going to spend on, you know, other companies overseas, so on and so forth. Just a souped-up effort to be able to, you know, bring industry to the region. So I would imagine part of that probably plays into the whole, you know, overall, you know, changes of that. In that 11-county region, I kind of found it interesting, and I know I sound like a broken record, but there's 5.4 million people that live in that 11-county region, which is two hours from here. That would make you the 23rd largest state in the country. It's got more population than South Carolina, more population than Alabama, more population than Louisiana. That's how big of a cluster actually that exists in that. So, yeah, I can guarantee you that would play into probably some of the reasons why they're not funding those, you know, those particular efforts. But there's still people on the street doing what they need to do.
Just one other question, and you keep going. Any possibility of a dissolution of the I-69 corridor?
We're not really sure. That's what we're really trying to find out, since there's no appropriation. Now, the I-69 corridor, Next Michigan Corporation, does have a tax incrementing tool that they can use, and it makes smaller municipalities eligible for that. And there've been some small projects in Chiawassee County that have been undertaken as a result of that. Wouldn't interfere with their ability to use some of those tools, but there wasn't any state funding in the Governor's budget. Now, just because it's not in the Governor's budget, doesn't mean that the legislature won't add it, you know, later in that process. Jeff was mentioning electricity. The other thing that I thought was very interesting is there's a new solar farm being built in Chiawassee County that is going to become the largest solar farm in the state of Michigan. So they're working hard on alternative energy as well. So...
More to come.
More to come. We don't have any old business before us. Any new business? Any other human service matters that the Board would like to bring before the committee this evening? Next, for information only, we have the St. Clair County Health Department. March 2019 points of interest.
Make a motion that we receive and file.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Could I have a motion to receive and file the packets?
So moved.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
We are going to do Judiciary last.
Okay.
It's about time you saved the best for last.
Yeah.
Somebody had to run out and get something, so I promised her we would make time for her.
Is Mr. Rushing next?
Yes. Environmental Public Works. Or Ways and Means, doesn't matter. You can go, Dave. We'll mix it up, Ways and Means.
I know. Well, so do we... Do we not be...
This time, I'd like to call the Ways and Means Committee to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Tomian.
Here.
Commissioner McConnell.
Here.
Commissioner Heidemann is absent. Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Commissioner Bone.
Here.
Commissioner Graytop.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right. Item two, additions, deletions, changes to the agenda.
Make a motion to approve agenda as presented.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Any citizens wishing to be heard? I do not have any, so if none, we will move on to updates. Do you have any updates on the Ways and Means? Seeing none conceptual initiatives, we have none. No old business. We're moving to new business. Opening of the 2019 Equalization Session pursuant to MCLL 209.5.
Justin. I would make the motion, we open this meeting?
Second.
Commissioners?
Before we get started, this is the reason we're sitting in here on a Tuesday at 4:00 per state statute. Normally, our meetings are on Thursdays, but why don't you explain a little bit of that?
Right. Yeah, so thank you for meeting on a Tuesday at 4:00. I appreciate it. MCL 209.5, basically, the statute, basically, it states that all, that the equalization process must start on the... This Tuesday, basically. All the commissioners across the county meet on this date. They start the process. You don't have to finish it. The law doesn't state that you have to finish it and complete the process on that date. However, it must be completed by the first Monday in May. So, I wasn't sure if I was going to be able to get the report done for today, however I was. But the reason that is, is because the assessors have to bring all their assessment roles to the Equalization Director, which is me, and they have up until, basically it was last Wednesday, basically last Wednesday, to get us the information, then we have to review it, put the roles together. So I was able to get the information together. Sorry that I just got the packet to you today. So I'd like to go through the packet, explain some different values and that, kind of where we're at. I wasn't expecting to complete the equalization process today, however, whatever you guys wish to do with that is in your court. So with that said, I'd like to just kind of go through it. Can you hear me fine when I talk like that?
Yeah, nothing talk.
Okay. You can hear fine?
Yes.
Okay, good.
That's easier.
That's easier. I feel better now.
You look better, too.
Thank you. Thank you. I was getting a kink in my neck. Basically, I'm just going to flip here to page three. That's just a letter to the Commissioners. Basically, our value in 2018, our county equalized value, I'll explain that real quick. County equalized value is... Sorry, I'm recommending the values. I'll back up here. My job is to... My department's job is to do studies and basically see where the level of assessment is across the county. We work with the assessors, and the assessors, they put values on everyone's property, whether it's real, personal, and they're the ones who distribute that value onto those properties. Now, I look at it as a whole, across each township, each village, each city, and then I compile all that together, and then I present the values to the Board of Commissioners, which is what I'm doing today. So the county equalized value is basically the assessed value. And the taxable value is the value that all citizens pay their taxes on. So a lot of the times, your county equalized value, which, once it's adopted by the state, will become your state equalized value, basically, a lot of times, that'll be higher, and your taxable value will be down lower. Now, in a declining market, when that assessed value comes down and they meet, then that's when your taxable value will be the same, and you'll see your taxable value go down. But until they meet, because until they meet, the taxable value will just keep going up with the rate of inflation, which this year was 2.4%, it'll continue to go up. So even if you see your value going down in a declining market, if it still hadn't reached where the taxable value was, your taxes are still going to go up. So that's just a kind of a quick explanation. So back to the recommended county equalized value for 2019. As I was saying, last year was 7,192,000... Sorry, 7,192,901,484. And this year's recommended value is 7,801,233,870. It's a pretty substantial increase, 8.45%. The market's been going strong for the past few years now, and it's showing. There's a lot of different uncappings. When I say uncappings, it's when you purchase a property, it changes ownership, that taxable value, as I was explaining, sometimes your taxable value's down here, and your assessed is up here. Once you change ownership, if it's not related, or it doesn't meet one of the statutory definitions, to not change, it's going to automatically become the assessed value. So that has to do with the taxable value. So I'm getting ahead of the game here. So we're going to move on now. Page four is simply just the resolution. I have it dated, actually, for our... For the full meeting on Thursday, it was at the 18th, so I've got it dated for that. Page five, that's just certification. That's basically saying, the State Tax Commission requires a director to have a certification of a Michigan Advanced Assessing Officer, which is also known as a Level 3. I'm certified as a Michigan Master Assessing Officer, which is Level 4. And then it also breaks down the values, the recommended equalized values for 2019. And I'll share those real quick. So to break down the county equalized value, I just said of the 7,801,233,870, this breaks it down for you. Agricultural, recommended county equalized value, 483,262,272. Commercial value, 727,881,650 million. Residential, 4,926,686... And then we have personal property, which is a total of 782,40,598. And I'll break that down as I move on to personal property. So just real quickly, agricultural's showing an increase. Agricultural property showing an increase of 5.64%. Commercial's at 15, about 15%. Industrials, just under 12%. And residential's just under 8%. So if you turn to page six, I've got a graph there that's showing those values I just shared with you. On the top, the top graph is the equalized value, and it's just kind of showing you in a pie graph how the value's distributed throughout the county, just so you can kind of get a vision. And on the bottom, it's the taxable value. As you can see, residential makes up 63% of our county equalized value throughout the county. So the majority of our value is in our residential class, which is our homes. Next in line is industrial with 11%. And then we have our personal property, which is, makes up 10%. Agricultural, 6%. And then commercial property, 9%. Sorry, commercials, 9%, then agricultural. Taxable value, residential, 62%. Industrial and personal, tied there, were around 12%. Commercial, 9%. And then our agricultural's 5% of the value. And as you turn on, turn to page seven, what that is, that report there basically breaks down the values of the real property per township, per the city, so you can kind of see what assessed values they had, the recommended equalized value. It also shows you at the far right, what percent that makes up of the county, so what percent of the value that township or city contributes to the county. And it also shows you the ratio there. Per the state constitution, all property must be assessed at 50% of true cash value. That's what that ratio is there. A lot of them are around 49.75, 49.63. So the assessor tries to get in with between 49 and 50, so it's as close to 50 as you can. They can't be right at 50, because if they were right at 50, and then the value's right at 50% of true cash value, they went into board review, the taxpayer went in to protest their taxes, and they, you know, gave... Not gave away, but ended up decreasing their assessment or increasing it. It could make that ratio move up to 50. And if it goes over 50, that creates a factor. And then, basically, what a factor is, is it takes whatever the difference is, and it takes that value, and then it distributes that amongst... Not distributes, but it allocates it amongst all taxpayers in that class, and then they all have to pay whatever that portion is. So I will say, we didn't have any factors in any of our townships or cities or villages this year. So that's a good thing.
Yes, Justin. On the... What you just brought up, when you have the assessor, whatever municipality it is, does the board review already have these figures in front of them, so when they do their judgment calls, they know that they can't go over 50%? Making their judgments, do they have a dollar figure? Okay, out of all the things, let's say a township or city has 20 cases come before their board, and they review each and every one on its own merits, do they have those figures to make sure that they have a dollar figure, that they cannot have consideration to go lower?
I don't... And again, I'm just speaking on, I don't know what each assessor does. I would say most likely, they don't have a dollar figure where they can go. The assessor may have an idea, because it's mass appraisal, so being that it's mass appraisal, there's going to be errors. So that's why we have the board review, because we want the taxpayers, when they find an error, we want them to check their record cards, we want them to look at their information. That's why they get the assessment notice. We want them to come in to board review and protest, so we can correct that and make it right. So as far as those figures, there could be an error that maybe... Not an error, but something that happened which triggered a mass majority of houses. But maybe they can't, you know, find each one individually, so they might say, okay, well, in the A-class, we're going to expect that we're going to have to decrease this amount of value, or increase this amount. Usually, it's decreased.
Well, the county gives the figures to each assessor or municipality, right?
Well, the county... What the county does is, we perform a study. My staff, we go out and we take a sample size of each class of property, agricultural, industrial. So we take a sample size of that, and then my staff, they'll go out and visit those samples. So when I say samples, they're property. So commercial buildings, it could be agricultural property with a farm, it could be an industrial building, industrial... But they're going to go out, and they're going to take a sample of the whole market and do a study. They'll do appraisals, we'll do sales studies. Any sales that we get, we go out on the sales, and we verify the sales, make sure that... Basically, that that sale price that is recorded is, in fact, contributed to that sale, that there wasn't... Nothing extra added to it, if that house was missing plumbing or something like that. So they got to go out and verify all the sales. And... What was the question? I got a side note here.
It's fine. Do the assessors have a dollar figure? Like, let's say...
Do they have an exact dollar figure? No. Does the assessor have kind of an idea that...
Because what would happen if, and you brought it up earlier, what would happen if it does go over 50%? Does the assessor have to redo his whole...
The assessor... No. Once the assessor hands the roll over to the board review, the assessor's done with it. They signed off, certified it, the assessor's done. Now it's in the board review's hands. So if that were to happen, and they went over 50, then a factor would just be applied to that. Then that's... Basically, the board review would hand it over to me. I would notice that it's a factor, and then I'm the one who would apply the factor. So that's how that would... To work out, so...
And just if this helps the understanding, I believe, see if my interpretation is correct, in the state of Michigan, you go with the historical value of the property. So if somebody bought a piece of property 30 years ago for 50,000, his neighbor's got the identical piece of property, and that's half a million, you got the assessed value and your equalized value, but your taxable value... Now, if the neighbor at the 50,000 sells his for the 500,000, your taxable value now goes to 500,000. It uncaps the taxable value, once you sell the property.
Right. Whatever that assessed value is determined, yes. Yep. So, yeah, somebody who's had a piece of property for a long time, most likely is going to be paying less in taxes than the guy who just purchased it, most of the time. Okay. Thought I was done.
Page 16.
So moving on, turn to page 16. Basically, what that is, is it's showing your... The county equalized value, the recommended equalized value. It's showing you the change between 18 and 19 equalized value and taxable value. That's what it's showing. So if you look down there, and it's on a per-unit basis, per township, it'll show you basically what the equalized value is going... It was increasing from last year. So that just basically breaks it all down. There is a chart that goes with that one. So if you turn to page 18, there's a chart there. You can see in the gray, that's representing the equalized value, so that's the recommended equalized value. And then the orange, that's the taxable value. So you can see they're kind of, you know, between, say, 4% and 10%, you have some others that are... Stick out there a little bit, but again...
If I could, I want to... Let me put you on the spot.
Nope. I'm expecting this one.
Two of them are townships that I represent. Ira had a negative 0.15, whereas Wales has the highest at 30.59. That's in the taxable value change. How does anomaly like that happen? As far as I'm aware, Wales did not have any large industrial come in there. How does the taxable value go up 30% on average throughout the whole township? And the other one go down?
Yeah, well, 30%, that's usually, unless there's some new property coming in, especially because the taxable went up as well. That one there is personal property, and that's Blue Water Natural Gas, holding its own storage. I'm actually looking into that one a little bit more, but that's what that is. That's a personal property. They reported it. I've talked to the guy who prepared the statement. They verified that it wasn't an error, so I'm moving into that.
That's very similar to the question you asked last year, David. How did 60 million go in, I think it was Ira, Consumers Power Plant? You know, people don't realize, when you see these buildings, they build a building, and guess what? There's $60 million of stuff in one of those buildings. I mean, these utility companies...
Yeah, that's utility, personal property.
Yeah, our utilities represent 20% of our entire SCV roughly in St. Clair County. That's how... That's how heavy that stuff is.
I think you were, sometimes what I'll do is, when these figures come before us, I'll ask questions that we may already know the answers to, but it helps explain to you on TV and...
Yeah. I'm assuming the Ira probably, the consumers took a big bump last year. They probably went in and worked, said, you know, you're over... You know, I'm just making assumptions, but to take a reduction, well, you said it was 60 million, it really is only 50 million, you know?
You know, and that's... Because that was the taxable value, so I wish I had a better answer to you on that.
When you get a chance, let me know, because I'm meeting you anyways.
Yeah, I was going to say, I can get back to you on that one and give you a better answer, yeah. So...
Justin, I got a couple comments for you. How many... How many people are you contracting out with now?
Right now, we're currently contracted to provide the assessing services for Port Huron Township, City of Elginak, and City of Marine City.
Okay.
Okay. Do we have additional capacity? I was, somebody reached out to me and asked, you know, one of their assessors is going to be retiring, they're looking, do we have additional capacity if we were to take? And I know you obviously probably have to more, hire more part-time staff or whatever, but do we have capacity to take on additional assessing?
We do. We've got capacity and we're already set up for it because we're doing the three that we're doing now. So like you said, we would have to hire more help, but we definitely have the resources.
Yeah, they just reached out to me last week so I can get back with them and I said I knew I was going to be seeing you and I just wanted to ask that question before.
Yep. So on the page 19, I always like this one because this graph kind of shows the history. You can see 2009, that was when we were at our highest point in our assessed value and taxable value. So the bottom, the blue, that's our taxable value. Top, that's our equalized value. You can see we're getting pretty close to reaching where we were at our high. Even with this significant growth, I think you got to keep in mind too, there's a lot more exemptions that we have nowadays than we did back in 2009. So I think if we didn't have like your personal property, UMPP and that type of thing, we may have reached that point, but those exemptions, I'm just throwing it out there to kind of put it in perspective a little bit. So we had our taxable value, we had an increase of 4%. So it's a substantial increase in taxable value, but we're still, it's obviously growing slower than our assessed value. If you can look at that graph, you can see that the gaps, I mean, it's still widening a little bit. There's about a 25% difference between our taxable value and our assessed value, but that has to go back to proposal A and the cap values. So it does, it only allows it to climb the rate of inflation, which again this year is 2.4%.
Justin, what closes that gap that you're talking about, the sale of homes?
The sale of homes, the uncappings, new property, any new construction, new development, anything like that would close that gap. And just to put in perspective, I was able to get in touch with a few other counties. Not all of them had their reports completed yet, but Lapeer County, they've recommended county equalized values have increased 6.2%. Taxable value, 4.11%. Macomb County increased their recommended county equalized value, 7.21%. Taxable value, 5%. Washtenaw County, their county, or recommended county like equalized value increased 8.17% and their taxable value 5.98%. So we're right in line with some surrounding counties, just to put it in perspective. And again, in the last page, that's just, it shows you in a chart, the percent change by class of your equalizing your taxable value throughout the years. And, oh. Probably going to ask, I was going to, go ahead.
I was going to ask you if the 8.45% increase, if that affects Headley in any way?
I'm actually happy to announce because you always don't, wouldn't like to hear it the other way, but there is no Headley reduction this year. In doing that, we're close and just kind of giving you an idea, our taxable value, as I was saying, is, I'll give you the exact number, of 6.6 million 245, or 6 billion 245 million 647. So 6.2 billion is our taxable value across the county. Basically, when I was doing the calculations, trying to determine, because I thought we were close and we were kind of teetering on having a Headley reduction this year, there's about 11 million difference if in additions or losses or new taxable.
Good news, thank you.
So I think that's really all I have.
Does anybody have anything else, Justin?
If he has any questions.
Do we need to have this forwarded to the full board?
You can approve it this evening if you would like, or you can forward it to the full board.
Make a motion for final action, support.
Okay, we have a motion for final and support. Any further discussion?
Yep. Is that motion on resolution 1905, is that what the motion's on, to approve that?
Yeah, that was, I actually.
Number of the final.
I actually made the resolution.
Yes.
For next meeting.
We have a motion including resolution 19.05, and we have a second. Do we need a roll call on this? I think I'd like a roll call on it.
Commissioner Tomian.
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann is absent. Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Bohm.
Yes.
Commissioner Greitop.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, at this time, do we have any other Ways and Means Matters?
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you, Commissioners. Seeing none. Any information only? Can I have a motion to receive and file?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. This time, we do not have our normal adjournment. We need to go in recess or because we final?
Since it was final, you can adjourn.
Okay, because it was finalized, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We stand adjourned. Who's next?
Who's taking the orders?
Yeah, if you want to.
I'd like to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners, Environmental Public Works Committee to order. Could I please have a roll call?
Commissioner Tomian.
Here.
Mr. McConnell.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Oh, here.
Commissioner Heidemann is absent. Commissioner Bohm.
Here.
Commissioner Greitop.
Yes.
Here.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Item two, additions, deletions, changes to the agenda.
Motion to approve as presented.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item three, citizens to be heard. I have nothing up here for citizens for the Environmental Public Works. Seeing none, we will move on to updates. Seeing none, conceptual initiatives, seeing none. No old business, no new business. Item number eight, Smith Creek landfill activities report.
Make a motion to receive and file.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number nine, anybody have any other environmental public work matters? Item number 10, information only, park financial documents and the city of Port Huron Quay and Michigan Street Reconstruction Project.
Make a motion to receive and file.
Support.
You guys doing the work on that, Duke?
I'm sorry?
You got that project?
Yes, we do. End of week number two right now.
You almost done?
Just about done. We'll talk more in November. All in favor? Motion to receive and file?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
Support.
Motion.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm getting ahead of myself here.
I'd like to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Judiciary and Public Safety Committee, meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Greitop.
Here.
Commissioner Bohm.
Here.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Commissioner Heidemann is absent. Commissioner Rushing.
Present.
Commissioner Tomian.
Here.
Commissioner McConnell.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Are there any additions, deletions or changes to the agenda?
Make a motion to approve it as presented.
Support.
We have motion in support. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Citizens to be heard, we have a few. First, I have Iris. Welcome.
I was kind of hoping I didn't have to follow him because he was so well-prepared and for the first time in three years, I prepared nothing. I only came to reaffirm the pet fund's commitment to doing whatever is necessary to make the animal shelter successful. Normally, I would have statistics to show you the great improvement that's already been made, but instead, I want to tell you a story, a short story. On December 22nd, I adopted Colonel from St. Clair Shore, or from St. Clair County Animal Control. Colonel probably right now as I speak is taking a nap, I assume on my bed, that's where he normally naps. Colonel is 100 pounds, he is black, he is probably a pit bull, Labrador mix, I'm pretty sure that's what he is. He was in the shelter three months before I adopted him. The good part about this story was the day I adopted him, he came out neutered, he was fully vaccinated, he was microchipped, and when I took him to the vet the next day, I don't know what's happening, when I took him to the vet the next day, he was completely healthy. That's after three months in animal control. That's a pretty fantastic thing. So I want to thank you all for making the changes that you made so that I could adopt him. Thank you.
Thank you, Iris. We heard a lot from you over the past, and we appreciate it, so thank you. Next, I have, any particular order? I have two people, I have Jamie Murray and Judy Smith. And you are?
Judy Smith.
Judy Smith, okay. Judy lives in Fort Grasset and Meadowland.
First, I want to thank you all for your service, every one of you. And I have a statement to read on public corruption. It's from the FBI website. Public corruption, the FBI's top criminal investigative priority poses a fundamental threat to our national security and way of life. It can affect everything from how well our borders are secured and our, how well our neighborhoods are protected, to how verdicts are handed out in courts, to how public infrastructure, such as roads and schools, are built. It also takes a significant toll on the public's pocketbooks. By siphoning off tax dollars, it is estimated that public corruption costs the United States government and the public billions of dollars every year. The FBI, the FBI is uniquely situated to combat corruption with the skills and the capabilities to run complex operations and surveillance. We have a Larry in the woods, we have a five-year-old child he has access to. Thank you.
Thank you. Jamie, Jamie Murray from St. Clair, Michigan?
I'm just gonna, I submitted a package and I'm hoping that it makes it to all the members on the board. And I'm just going to read the cover letter that's included with it and then I have a question, as long as I have time, it's not that long. Dear Commissioners, my name is Jamie Murray. I am the mother of Kevin Linky and the grandmother of Oakley Grace Linky. As you probably are aware, there's been a great deal of controversy surrounding this case and the grave concerns we have for Kevin's daughter, my granddaughter. Enclosed in this packet is all the information you need to help us remedy this awful situation. There is every report from the supporting agencies, transcripts, personal stories and experiences from families as well as other needed documentation to help you understand what is happening with the situation. What I want to tell you is that this is not about a disgruntled father that did not get his way in a custody hearing. This is not about revenge or bitterness or mental illness. This is about a little girl and the danger she is in and the lack of concern from the very agencies that are supposed to ensure her protection and safety. This started over three years ago and has continued to get worse and has devastated the people involved. This is about a Mr. Larry Whitcomb, a registered sex offender, and his repeated and ongoing contact with my granddaughter, Oakley Grace Linky. When this was first brought to our attention, that this man had access to Oakley and that the maternal family was providing that access, Kevin went through the proper channels to find out about and remedy the situation. First, he went to Oakley's mother and was met with no response. He then went to the maternal family, Ron and Nora Moller, her great-grandparents and her grandmother, maternal grandmother, again, met with no response. Larry Whitcomb lives in a shack, a dirt floor shack on the Mollers' property on McLean Road that has no running water or electricity. He has been there for almost 10 years. Oakley is out to the Mollers and babysat out there on a regular basis. Once there was no response from the family, Kevin then went to FOC, again, no action. He went to CPS. CPS did an investigation and their recommendation was that Larry was a threat and there was to be no contact. They issued a duty to warn and said zero contact with Oakley and Mr. Whitcomb. That did not happen. Oakley continued to have contact with Larry regularly. This was witnessed by numerous people and was verified by Ron Moller himself as well as Larry. Kevin then went to Judge Tomlinson. Judge Tomlinson has continually stated from the bench that CPS did an investigation and saw no issues with the situation, and that is simply not the truth.
You have about 10 seconds.
As her father, Kevin should be entitled to state he wants her to have no contact with Larry. However, the judge continues to override that. Larry, in court under oath, stated he has continued ongoing contact with Oakley. He stated Grandpa Ron takes her out to his shack and lets her play with Larry at the house. When the family is asked if Larry has contact, they continually lie and say he does not. We have been contacted by several people in the community that again, have witnessed ongoing contact with Larry and Oakley. So it is happening and the judge is allowing it with malice and contempt towards Oakley's father and in direct contempt in disregard for CPS's recommendation and other agencies. There's a lot more to this than I can state here, but this is the most concerning. Larry Whitcomb is a violent sexual predator. His history is appalling and terrifying. His contact with Oakley is unacceptable. His living in the shack off a public trail is not only illegal but unethical for the powers that be to allow it. He has people out there drinking with him and it butts up to a public campground. No one has been aware of his presence there until this happened. This is a crime. I am sure once you read his history and are aware of this man's conduct, you will want something done, not only for Oakley but for all the unsuspecting people using that trail. It is a duty that you do something. Please do not turn a blind eye to this. If it was your child or grandchild, I am certain you would not want them around this man either. No one has asked the Mollers to give up Larry if they want to have him at their house and on their property and around their family. But we do not want Oakley out there and we do not want her around him. I know their, this is their right to know. He gave up the right to privacy when he committed the acts he did. For some reason, it has been hidden from the public registry, we don't know why. When FOIA was requested, it was denied. Maybe you can find out, but that is in direct violation to the rights of the people of this community. We have a duty to make this right and find out why it has happened in the first place. We have a duty to investigate this judge to find out why he is blatantly and illegally violating a CPS order to cease contact with Larry Whitcomb and Oakley. We have a duty to the people you have vowed to serve in your community. Please do your job. Don't mistake this as a frivolous attempt to start a controversy. This is a man's child, this is an innocent little girl, this is your community, this is your job. Please do something. Thank you.
I had asked that packet of information, that Commissioner McConnell, to get that to Jenny and get that scanned so that that information can be distributed that you have there, Greg.
Okay, thank you. Are there any updates? Yes. Are we going to talk about IRTB tonight?
Let's do it next time.
Okay.
I'm back from my early beat.
And we're very grateful.
Any conceptual initiatives?
We have no old business under new business. Item 7A, legal services agreement for the 31st Circuit Court, Family Division Lawyer, guardian, add.
Add item.
Add item L through GAO.
I moved that this, I moved that this agreement be forwarded to the board for?
Support. We have motion in support. Is there any questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item B, the legal services agreement for the 31st Circuit Court, Family Division, Contract Attorney. Could move this be moved to the full board?
Support.
We have motion in support. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 7C, the St. Clair County Central Dispatch add-on console proposal.
Make a motion, we send it to the full board?
Support.
We have motion in support. I see Tina is in the audience.
I've got a couple questions for Tina. It's probably not even related to this, it's the Marine.
Probably not even related to this, is the Marine City paging thing. If you can just give us a little update where we're at with that.
Tina, you, when did you start? November? I mean, as the director. Tina is still new as the director, and when she was taking over, there was nothing for her to do. It was quite a quiet transition because everything was in place. But she's done a magnificent job, and we really appreciate the direction we're going and everything that's been done. So that's a little personal thank you. Very happy with the way things are going. And give us a little update if you could.
I sent, did you both receive the email that I sent out today?
Yes.
The holdup that we're having, we're trying to do two things. We're trying to put a micro tower site in Marine City. Unications is completely funding that. There's licensing involved with that, and before the state will approve the 700, 800 megahertz license for that micro tower site, Unications has had to build it, and they're gonna be bringing it to Lansing, they say three weeks? I can't remember what that email said. Roughly within three weeks. They're gonna bring it to Lansing for testing, and once it's completed the testing, then the state will issue the licensing required to put that there. The email that I, the other thing that we're trying to do is we're trying to get the signal strength in the south end of the county raised up. We're still working on that. The email that I had asked for an update for, I didn't get a response on. Al Mellon from the state forwarded it to the next guy up. I'm still waiting for a response.
I'm assuming you've been corresponding not just with Greg and with the fire chiefs down there. As you well know, we were, had been told that things were fine, things weren't fine. So I appreciate you, you know, staying on top of it, continuing to follow through and stuff.
And because they gave me a 90-day window back the 1st of February, I decided to check on it again today, knowing for sure I was coming here so I could give you some information. And I'll stay more adamant on checking on that as we go, because those windows are closing, and I want them to know that I'm not going away when I ask for this stuff. They've learned that.
Does, with the, with the 5G and any of these things that are coming on, I've spent quite a bit of time with AT&amp;T, does that, does that improve anything? Does it tie in with our system at all? Is there...
The one thing, and they're still trying to do some research on that, I want to say Marine City reported, it was either the end of December or 1st of January, that they had a two-week window where their pagers, they started to have some issues after we put those new antennas on for them, and then it cleared up. Well, they have, and they're still trying to test on this, but they're saying the increase in the cell signal can interfere with the frequency that those pagers are working on, and that seemed to resolve itself. It was only a two-week window, and they really don't have an explanation, but they kind of thought the more that that increases, the more that could affect that, and this tower will help all of that.
You know, they, they did increase the power from Verizon, from the north end of Marine City up to Point Drive. That area was dead zone, and now you can make it through there with a pulse. That power did go up in that immediate area, which would be just north of...
And just for the, for the audience, I mean, many of us live along the coast. Mr. Commissioner Greathop drives up from Algonack every day. We're very well aware of dropped phone calls in that area, and we've been working with Verizon and AT&amp;T, and like I said, some of the solutions now is going to be deploying this 5G technology, which is going to be able to fill in some of these other areas. But, I mean, it's, like I said, I drive it every day. Bill, you drive it every day, and you know, right when you're gonna lose somebody, and we, you know, we do experience a lot of, a lot of issues, you know, along the waterfront down there.
I could tell you I'm gonna lose you in five, four, three.
Yeah, I talked to you a long time. Okay, I'll call you right back.
Boom, gone.
Thank you.
So Tina, it, we're, this, this actual agenda item is for an additional council?
That's correct.
That, that we're gonna be purchasing, using the state purchasing agreements, so we didn't have to rebid it out. They've already bid this. It's gonna allow us to have an extra facility, and we've had some issues, right? Where there's been one down, so when we had five and we were down to four, it gets, it gets sketchy when nothing happens, which is very seldom. You can get away with one, but that's just not, that just doesn't work.
And we found ourselves with any critical incident. We bring in extra staffing, but we don't have the manpower, or the radio capability to really help the center the way it needs to be helped, and this would fix that.
Right. Commissioner Greathop?
The, one of the things that we learned, and we're not talking about it today, but we did go out to New Mexico, and one of the things that we learned out there in talking about major incidences that do happen, is that communication is a whole lot more important than most people think it is. You know, they think about, you know, the police responding, the fire responding, EMS responding, and they forget about central dispatch or communications that are going on. And that turned out to be a very key part of these operations.
Correct.
And so I'm glad to see that we're doing this piece here, adding to that, if there ever is a major incident, hopefully not here, but if there is, that we have the expanded space, you can bring in people, and we can handle these incidences in a very professional way. And I know that Justin from Homeland Security Emergency Services Group is actively working with you on this too.
Yes, yes.
Our team is pulling together good.
Yes.
Appreciate that.
Good. Any other questions? Tina, thank you very much.
Thanks.
We have a motion in support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 70, the recovery high school contract for the Romine Group.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move at this point that we make this for final action, and then ask John Romine and Z to discuss it with the board, please.
Second.
We have a motion in support. We're gonna get some discussion?
What, discussion now or after the...
No, now.
Okay. John, if you or Z would address us, and I have talked to, just a preface, I have talked to individual board members, tried to give them an update of what this program is about, where you're going, what you're trying to do, so they do have some knowledge. But please, fill in all the blanks for us.
Thank you, the entire Board of Commissioners. We appreciate the opportunity to talk to you. I'd like to, first of all, introduce you to Ziad Elsall, who is kind of my partner in this project, and kind of explain how we met, and what the idea was, and where we're at, and then I'll talk about the Romine Group role in this entire process. So this is, he goes by Z. But Z, tell me your story, please.
Hi, Commissioners. Thank you for having us today. My name is Ziad Elsall, and in 2016, well, let me start out by saying, I, my family was in the restaurant business, so I grew up in that business. As a teenager, I didn't want to go to school, so my father made me, said that if I didn't want to go to school, that I was gonna have to come to work, and that's what I did. So we ended up running a very successful restaurant business here in Michigan. Anyways, at a certain point, I decided that that was my father's dream and not mine, so I ended up going back, getting a GED, attending Henry Ford Community College, going on to University of Michigan, and then getting accepted into dental school, because that's what I wanted to do. To make a long story short, when, while I was in, while I was in my studies, I had a friend who was like a brother to me that died from an overdose of heroin. I had never used heroin. I'd never used drugs. I didn't know how to handle his death, and I wanted to see what, why this, my friend would have killed himself over this drug. So I ended up trying it. Excuse me. About eight months after I first tried it, because I did, I ended up liking it, I had an overdose. I was out for 10 hours on my arm, cut off the circulation, woke up in the hospital, and they told me that they had to amputate my arm. I was devastated, to say the least. However, I, I look at it as a blessing. And the reason I say that is because, as you all, as you're all aware, there is a big opiate epidemic, and it's killing people every day. So I feel like I'm blessed, because a lot of people don't get to come back with one arm, they just die. So I felt like God was telling me something. Felt like he was telling me to do something different. I decided to come out to Port Huron, because I heard they had a wonderful recovery community. I came out here with the intent that I was gonna make a difference in someone else's life. I wasn't gonna, I was no longer gonna chase my worldly desires. I was gonna get outside of myself and do something to make a difference on a grassroots level. So I came out to Port Huron. I started volunteering with bridge builders. They had a $10-an-hour job that I applied for. And I, that's when I met John Romine. And I can recall vividly him looking at my resume and looking at me like I was insane, looking at my resume and looking back at me, asking me, "Do you seriously want this job?" And I said, "Yeah, I do. I'm trying to humble myself, and I'm trying to, it's not really for the money, I want to do some service." Well, anyways, long story short, I ended up getting that job. And John became my mentor, and we would meet every week, and he asked me to come up with some goals of what I, how I wanted to attack this plan. While working with bridge builder kids, I realized that there was a gap that wasn't being filled, and that gap was teens, especially in St. Clair County. We have no, we had no after-school programs for teens, and I was shocked. We had no mentoring programs, aside from sons, that were doing substance abuse prevention. There's a lot of wonderful, wonderful organizations in this community. And me being in recovery, I realized, you know, we have so many, so many organizations that do so many great things for people like me who are already in recovery, but what about prevention? What if we could prevent this stuff from happening from the, from the, when kids are young? And that's when the idea came, and that's when Difference Makers was born. We started this 501(c)(3) nonprofit called Difference Makers that is a mentoring and substance abuse prevention specifically for teens in St. Clair County. We started out with three kids. As of today, we have 28 kids that we service. We've prevented two suicides, and probably a lot of substance use, for sure. Anyways, I would meet with John every week, because he helped me start this nonprofit. I was familiar with business, restaurants, I've owned them, very familiar with how businesses run, but nonprofits, not so much. I just knew that I was passionate and I wanted to do this, and I met with John once a week, and he helped me put this plan together. Needless to say, John, John's, John, he challenges me, and every week he would say, "Okay, what, you know, this is great, but I think we need to do more." So he said, "If you could do anything in the world right now, what would you do?" So I told him about these recovery high schools that they have in Texas. There's a documentary called Generation Found. It talks about these recovery high schools that they have in Texas. And I told him that if there was anything that I would love to do, it would be there, but how are we gonna do that? You know, that's just a crazy idea. So I told him to go watch the documentary. He came back the next day, and he said, "We have to do this." So that's how this whole idea got started. I'm gonna let you tell John the logistics of it, but I just want to tell you, I just want to actually, you know, there was a lot of steps to get to standing on this stage today. Commissioner Greathop, I really want to thank you for, you know, supporting this, because there's a lot of talk about what, what are we gonna do? But there's not too much action on this, and I feel like this is revolutionary, and I feel like it's gonna be saving lives, to say the least. So I'll let John tell you about the logistics of it. Thank you.
So Z and I met, and I kind of formed this informal partnership. And just so you know a little bit about me, I'm a career educator. Started as a teacher, became a counselor, became a principal, became a superintendent, and about 22 years ago, became involved in the charter school movement. And we have either started ourselves or worked with groups to start 33 charter schools here in Michigan, including in this area. We started Landmark Academy. We started Merit Academy down in New Haven, and we became involved with Intervention Academy, which is a county-supported program. And you may remember the history, you may not, but originally, a charter, and I don't know how much you know about charter schools, so I'll just give you a Reader's Digest condensed version here, but charter schools are schools of choice. They are public schools, they are funded by student state aid, the same amount of money that the local school district gets per student. And what happened is Intervention Academy was started at the jail. In order to start a charter school, you have to be authorized or be granted a license to operate a public school in the state of Michigan. That license or authorization can come from a four-year college or university, public. It can come from a two-year public community college, a local RISA, or a local school district. So when Intervention Academy started, it was authorized by St. Clair RISA. There was some differences that they had with the school board at the Intervention Academy and RISA, and this was when Dan DeGraw was the leader of that organization. And they basically parted ways about five years ago. And so I was contacted, and we are a group that helps start charter schools, but we also then stay and oversee the schools. So basically, our organization operates as the superintendent of schools, kind of the central office. And so I went and met with the Intervention Academy board. They were concerned because their license was gonna be terminated June about five years ago, six years ago, and wanted to know if there was any way we could help them. And I said, "Yes, we would," but first of all, I had to get somebody else that would authorize the school. And so I said, "Well, I will go talk to Ron Wollene, who was superintendent of Port Huron Schools at that time." And Ron realized that there was a real need, because the kids were in jail, and yet they were attending school during the day. And so he said that, yes, he would consider authorizing, and went to their board, and the board approved it. And so they became the authorizer of the charter school that's located in the jail called Intervention Academy. And the interesting part of that is, it's actually legally called a strict discipline academy. They follow the charter school law of the state of Michigan, Michigan Department of Education, but if a school is involved with incarcerated students, they're called strict discipline academies, because it's, the students are put there by court order. There are seven in Michigan. So St. Clair County Intervention Academy at the jail is one of the seven. And so we took it over, and Ron Wollene was willing to be the administrator and oversee the school in the Port Huron Schools. And so when I met Z, I had this wild, crazy idea. Why don't we do a recovery school within Intervention Academy? And Z had me look at this video that he referred to, and we decided to take a trip to Houston, Texas, to Archway Academy, which is kind of the model for recovery high schools in America. They started with 15 students. They've had up as high as 160 students. The common denominator is every single student in the school is in recovery from alcohol or drugs. And so we love the model. We were inspired by the program and the director, and I said to Z, "Let's see if we could do do a school within the school. Keep these kids separate because the kids that are in Intervention Academy right now are there because a judge said, 'You're going to Intervention Academy, part of the jail program.'" Could be day treatment, night watch, or the actual jail program. And so the thing that I found fascinating was that Archway's kind of become the model for several recovery high schools. There are only 36 recovery high schools in America. There are none, zero, in Michigan. So this would be the first school that would be totally and primarily focused on students, high school age, ninth through 12th grade, that are in recovery from alcohol or drugs. And being involved in this community, I have sat probably in a dozen different meetings and people talk and say, "We have an opioid problem here in Michigan, and specifically in St. Clair County. We gotta do something. Everybody get your calendars out, we gotta meet again, we gotta talk about this, this is an important issue." And so I've talked and talked and listened and listened, and finally said, "Let's do something. Let's do a program that will help save lives." And so I knew our first step was to go to Jamie Kane, the new superintendent, because they were the oversight, the authorizer for the school. And if he said, "No deal," it would stop there. Jamie loved the idea, approved it. I knew my next step was to go to the school board at Intervention Academy. That was former Deputy Tom Buckley is the president. Of course, I knew Sheriff Donal, Donley, and talked to them about the idea. They loved the idea and said, "Let's do it." So I talked to the principal, Troy Perick, and he agreed with it. And so then, started talking to the board at Intervention Academy, and of course, we had the advantage, the Commissioner Greitop sits on that board, Mike McMullin, who has been working with the courts when a child or a student is assigned to the academy. And everybody liked the idea. And so we started looking at, "How are we gonna fund this?" And we met with CMH, Deb Johnson, and Deb was willing to take on the responsibility of funding the therapist, because we know that these kids, who are students, are gonna need help with where they're at emotionally, whether it's a family problem, a personal issue, the addiction, whatever it might be. And she finally agreed that they were willing to do that. We're in the process of kind of finalizing who that therapist would be. We've had several delays simply because meeting some of these different standards. And then we talked to Commissioner Greitop and asked if the county would consider funding the director's position. And that would be Difference Makers, the president and founder is Zee, so he would conduct this program. The students will meet in a separate classroom in the jail. There will be one solid group of students. We'd like to start with anywhere between 10 and a maximum of 20. We'd like to start the first week of May. And those students will all have one common, commonality among themselves, and that is that they are all in recovery. So they won't be mixed with the other students. So the appeal that we made with Commissioner Greitop, who is now brought up to the commissioners, was would the commissioners consider the county funding this position so that we could officially start the first week of May? So we're excited, we think that this is gonna save lives. We already have talked to some families, we haven't made a commitment to them because we're trying to finalize everything where we're at in the finances of operating this program. All of the education will be covered through the Michigan Department of Education, because every student that's in this program, and we're calling it the Intervention Academy Recovery High School, they are Intervention Academy students. So this coming school year, we'll get about $8,000 per student, which is added to the income that Intervention Academy receives from the state. That's the same state aid that Port Huron Schools gets for each of their students. So we know the education part, the teacher, the expenses, the furniture, the equipment, and of course, the county is paying for the building, so there's no building cost involved. So the whole education part of the Intervention Academy is covered. What we need to cover is the recovery part, which will be before school in the morning, after school in the evenings, weekends, summers, because these kids are most at risk on weekends and summer when they're not in school. So they'd meet in the morning as part of the recovery, 8:30, they go to class till 3 o'clock, then the after-school recovery portion of the program would begin. So I would be glad to answer any other questions. I think I've covered.
United Way? United Way?
Oh, yes. We have been fortunate to partner with probably a half a dozen different groups, and this contract would really be with the Romine Group. And we would be overseeing Zee and Difference Makers and the recovery portion of the program, just as we oversee the school portion of the program. But we've also partnered with Port Huron Area Schools. We have partnered, obviously, with the commission and the county commissioners. We have also partnered with CMH, and our most recent partnership is United Way. They have been willing to fund some money so that we can do the recruitment of the students and have Zee involved in that process, as well as the therapist, so that they can meet the kids, introduce them, kind of screen them, be involved with them, start building relationships with them before the school officially opens. Questions?
Yeah, I got some. Mike, Bill, I know you, and I see Mike there, a bunch of you guys have been working on this, you know, for a while. This is obviously a pilot program. I think the contract is through 2020, if I'm not mistaken, Carrie. What is the, what is the cost?
So the annual cost of this contract is $65,000. Since it goes through the childcare fund, we'll be eligible for reimbursement. So for this budget year, we'll have to put in an additional, just under $18,000 will come from your contingency to appropriate to the childcare fund. And then going forward on an annual basis, our contribution will be $26,000.
Does anybody have any other questions?
Answered mine.
Yeah, and I, to, you know, when I talked to Bill before and, you know, moving forward, obviously, the budget, and one of the other concerns that I, as a commissioner, was getting into the school business, okay? You know, the county with us, you know, we get involved in a lot of different things. I've had, you know, conversations with Jamie Kane regarding this and everything else, and I fully support moving forward on this to, to, you know, to see where this takes us, I guess. This Intervention Academy charter school that we started, I was on this board when we had the old jail, right? When?
Yes.
We weren't, you, you know, throw the kids in the jail, they weren't getting educated, no GEDs, no nothing, right? So when we rolled out the Intervention Academy, I don't even know how many GEDs it's gotta be.
435, something like that, right?
435, and if we had 30 in probably 30 years, that was a lot, you know? So, and the Intervention Academy at the time was first one in the state, if I'm not mistaken, you know? So, so I commend this board because we're not, you know, afraid to tackle these kinds of things, to have these conversations. I think reaching out to community mental health, you know, United Way and a lot of these other services. I know when we first started, we didn't expand the reach, but as we expanded the reach, we found there was additional agencies that were willing to step up and help and assist. And I think, you know, moving forward, that there's gonna be other, you know.
Yeah, we've already had, a lot of people say to us, "Well, you know, once you're open and you're up and running and we see that this is gonna happen, come back and see us, we, you know, we, we'll be glad to join the troops then." But it's, I guess, the, the risk of starting it and getting it started, we are totally confident that this school will start, that will have a profound effect, whether it's 10 kids or 20 kids to start. I actually believe that over the next several years, this is gonna explode. I think we'll double, quadruple the number of kids that need help.
Well, I find it, you know, very interesting, being a pilot program in Michigan, you know? They're gonna go back to some of the things we do. I'm not gonna bore you with landfills, but we do, you know, our landfill, we're the only ones in the country that do a specific process out of our land, at our landfill, and it is super successful. Now, you would, that would, that would be something that board, you know, county boards would usually never take the actions that we did and, you know, put, you know, had some risk, you know, moving forward, but, you know, the amount of money that we're talking about here isn't going to, you know, put the county in any jeopardy here.
I think the urgency is the final thing I would like to say, because our money from United Way is conditional upon us utilizing that money in the next month or so to recruit students, get them involved, get them registered, get them into the school program.
Yeah, and there's a motion on table for final action this evening, and if there's any odds and ends that need to get cleaned up, Carrie, between the next board that you need to bring back to us. Yeah, okay.
Got a question for Carrie. You're forecasting $26,000 annually after the August 31st of 2020, if this gets approved tonight, that'll be the annual cost. What will be the future contracts? Are they gonna be annual contracts or three-year contracts or, don't know yet?
Don't know yet. That'll, that'll be decided next year.
Couple of things I would say. The, the Archway Academy in Houston is very, very successful at fundraising. Not only do they get the state aid that we're talking about getting here, but they are also very successful in fundraising. It's obviously a tax deduction for people, but there are people that would support something like that, and that's always a possibility. Without going into detail, the state legislature is looking at some changes and some funding for schools of this type. It's way too premature to say what it is and how it's gonna happen, but I can tell you that Lansing is seriously looking at it, especially because this will be the first one in the state to jump off, and they realize the need that we have there, and we do have a tremendous amount of support in Lansing to do that. I can see down the road because we are not, as a board of commissioners or a county, involved in schools. The amount of money that we are investing in this through 2020 is really a small amount of money, but I can see where it's entirely possible that the end of 2021, 22, whatever that might be, we might be out of the support business. You guys will be up and running, you'll be so successful, you won't even want us around you anymore.
Well, and to reemphasize what you just said, Commissioner, we have met with Representative Shane Hernandez several times, and he is the one that's really interested in initiating some legislation to help fund recovery high schools, and specifically, the seven that are designated as strict discipline academies that exist right now in Michigan. None of those seven are recovery high schools, though. Those are simply schools that have students that are there because the court ordered them to be there. That's why they're called strict discipline academies.
And this could lead to those strict discipline academies copying what you and Zee are doing, which is implementing a, another program. We'll be the first in the state with this, if those other six are in line, maybe to get some funding, and with the funding, they may possibly.
Well, we've already talked to several of the seven, and they've said, "If you pull this off and this gets open, we want to talk to you because we would like to do something similar."
Okay. Very good. Any other questions? So we have motion and support on the table for final action. This would be a roll call vote.
Commissioner Tomian.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman is absent. Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Bohm?
Yes.
Commissioner Greitop?
Um, yes.
Commissioner McCann?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Gentlemen, thank you very much for what you're doing, for coming today.
Thank you for the support. We appreciate it so much.
All right, now we're up to item 7E, the asset recovery and management services contract renewal for the Intervention Center. Does anybody, first of all, will ask for a motion?
I'll make a motion, we send it on to the full board.
Support.
We have motion and support. If there's any questions, there's a reason sometimes that you get moved back, and it was, it was, well, according to our beloved leader, he said at one of the meetings that Captain Bliss left early after he was done, and he said, "Well, we're just gonna push him right to the end of the meeting, so we make him stay through the whole thing." So I don't know if that had anything to do with it or not. Right? This is just, this is just a renewal of the, the recovery from when we have our hotel guests in the, in the jail have some type of medical needs, and they go into the hospital, they go into the dental work, they do whatever, and we weren't able to get reimbursements that easily. This company goes after the reimbursements, and we collect 37% of what they collect. We receive 37% of what they collect. And it's been, they get 37% as the fee, we get the, the balance. And it's, and it's been successful. So does anybody have any questions? Not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 7F, the 2018 Operation Stone Guard Grant Agreement.
Make a motion, we forward this to full board.
Support.
We have motion and support. This is a $250,000 grant last year, maybe $93,000, kind of gets shared amongst, who, City of Port Huron, Marysville?
I remember when it was a couple million.
Like 2.3 million back in, yeah.
Chair's diet team gets money, or not diet team, but the Marine Division.
Marine Division. So it's all, it's, it's, this is all good. It's an increase. It's way lower than, like you say, what it was in the past, but it's two and, one and a half times more than it was last year, so. Motion and support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Are there any other judicial public safety matters at this time? Seeing none. Receiving pile packets?
So move.
Support.
We have motion and support, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Motion carries, all in favor?
Aye.